All right, you're up.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call this board of selectmen's meeting to order at 6:04 PM on February 14th. Happy Valentine's Day. Happy anniversary to my wife, who allowed me to be here tonight. And number two tonight would be approved the December 27, 2018 minutes. I think we were all there?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? So moved.
I wasn't here on the 24th.
Okay. And to approve, well, we can approve the 24th of January because we don't have quorum of those that were there. Okay, number three, public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone who wishes to address the board of selectmen with any issues that are not on the agenda. I'd like to call up Dale Midgley from the Maine Veterans Cemetery and a member of American Legion Post, number 19, to speak.
First of all, I want to thank the selectmen for generous donation they made to the Southern Maine Veterans Cemetery. By the way, how many of you have ever been out to the Southern Maine Veterans Cemetery over in Springvale?
Before it was a cemetery.
It's been in existence since 2010.
And since that time, we've had 1,250 burials, of which 21 are from Kenny Bonkport, either veterans or spouses. I brought some information with me tonight so that I could share it with the committee in case they would like to distribute it, but this cemetery is one as part of the main cemetery system, and it is the newest cemetery. And right now, we are probably number three in terms of burials. Every veteran and spouse is eligible for burial in the cemetery as long as their discharge is less, you know, is not dishonorable or bad conduct. So if anyone is interested in knowing more about the cemetery, all they have to do is go onto our website, southernmainvetrancemetary.com, and you can get the information. But if you have an opportunity, I'd recommend you go up there and take a look at it. One of the interesting things is we, this passed Veteran's Day on November 11th, we put up a World War I memorial, which is the first one in the main cemetery system. It was designed by the Sanford Regional Tech Students, completely designed, built, and put up by them. And in the spring, there's going to be around 2,000 poppies that are going to pop out of the ground, so it'll be quite a very interesting sight for you to see. But if you get an opportunity, drive up there, it's on Route 109. Go into Springvale as if you're going to Acton, you'll see the signs, drive in, look around. I think you'll be very impressed. And I want to thank the veterans again. I want to thank these, you know, the Kenny Bonkport selectmen for their generous donation of $500. And all of that money goes strictly to the support of the Veterans Cemetery. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Would anyone else like to address the board with anything that's not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none. Item number four, public hearing to consider a new liquor license application submitted by First Service KPT Hospitality Group, DBA Mabel's Lobster Claw, 124 Ocean Avenue. I'd like, since this is a new change of ownership, new license, I'd like to open the public forum. Would anybody like to speak to this? Seeing none, I will close the public forum. Ken, do I have a vote?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? So moved. I'd like to, for those of you following along at home and in the audience, the town officials, the police, and highway, et cetera, have all signed off code on this, so this is not simply a formality, but it has been thoroughly vetted. Okay, number five, public hearing to consider a renewal, oh, yep, a renewal license.
It should say, it should say new.
Okay, a new. This is for a change of ownership, a new liquor license application submitted by First Service Edgewater Incorporated, DBA Edgewater Inn, 126 Ocean Avenue. I'd like to open public forum on this. It is my understanding that this approval will be contingent upon taking ownership. The ownership is going to change, is that correct, Sonny? Okay. Any comments? I'll close the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor? Very good. Number six, consider a liquor license renewal application for Sheila W. Matthews Bowl, DBA Rumline Resort, 41 Terrence Creek Road.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And number seven, consider a special amusement permit renewal application for Sheila W. Matthews Bowl, DBA.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? So moved. Okay, number eight, the presentation by Joe Cutera regarding proposed bond structures for the village parcel. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Do you have the hard copy of what I had put together?
They have a copy in their packet, yes, under item eight.
What I thought I'd do is take your notes for you, and the, you know, first page are just maps of the area to orientate ourselves. And we're, we need to, we have options, and we have choices. And I'm indifferent as to which choice. We can make anything work, but wanted to sort of explain that. So if you look in your packet on page two and three of 20, there are two ways of identifying the financing. The IRS code prohibits the use of taxes and proceeds to the extent that greater than 10% of the project financed for those proceeds are for non-governmental use. And non-governmental means not state or local. For example, if the Navy happened to have a house there, or the post office, that's considered non-governmental according to the tax code. And so what we need to do is bifurcate or cut the project to separate governmental use versus non-governmental use. And of course, tax-exempt financing is much to your benefit. I did a financing for SAD 28, AA3, AA+ yesterday, on Tuesday, and they borrowed 20-year money on a tax-exempt basis at a 2.85%, still kind of attractive. They borrowed 20-year taxable money at a 3.74. 3.74 fixed for 20 years with a 10-year call is still a fairly attractive rate. So on the left, on page two of 20 and three of 20, we have two ways of identifying the governmental use versus the private use. And the, on page two of 20, that takes the assumption that the town would have, oh, and then Laurie's group did an incredible job. This bottom map on page one, they literally cut the whole property into 50-square-foot grids, so we're able to count the blocks to identify what would be governmental versus non, and included green space, wetlands, roads, easements, and available properties. But, so that's what the blocks mean, that the maximum town use, we would identify as about 30, 0.86 acres for a town building, the roads, which of course the town would own and maintain, the wetlands, which the town would retain as green space, and any easements, which the town retained, for a total of about 23 acres. And I broke down, if that were the case, and the analysis was accurate, which I challenge, and needed to be accurate to make sure, that we could do $2.5 million of the $10 million purchase on a tax-exempt basis, and $7.5 million of the $10 million on a taxable basis because of the private use. On the right side is the minimal town use, where the town would reserve five acres for a future town building, nine acres of road, and then McCabe ROW easement, for a total of 14 acres. So you have 23 or 14. Now, the benefit of page three is that, well, let's talk about the difficulty with page two, is that the tax code requires that the property that the town would keep be at full market value. And of course, if we have wetlands, what do you charge for a tax rate for a wetland, maybe $100 an acre, as opposed to developable property, $1,000 an acre? And so the more wetlands the town had, the more difficult it is for bond council to determine that the fair market value of those wetlands, for example, are the same as a developable property or a road. And so we'd need to go through fairly extensive analysis to develop the fair market value for acre. That's why it's yellow column, and down below, the yellow column. And I don't have the, that would require a assessor to, in fact, calculate those, and that would identify how much on a fair market value basis we could issue for bonds. On the right-hand side, it's a much easier analysis, in that if we do not include the wetlands, or the transmission line, or other easements from the analysis, and just assume that that becomes non-governmental use, then we're able to say that every block is of the same fair market value. For example, the wetlands would be included in the purchase price for a private user. Were that the analysis, then that would leave us a million and a half of bonds that could be financed on a tax-exempt basis, and $8.5 million on a taxable. So your first choice is, on pages two and three, what is your, what is the town's determination in terms of how we want to size the governmental use versus a private use? And we have, and Laurie and I are, and Jenna are talking about maybe middle of April to do the financing, so that leaves us a little bit of time, but not so much time as it drags to make that option. So on your checkmark, which option do you want to have in terms of establishing governmental use? Now, if you turn to page four and five, your second option is maturity structure. And the, and I'm taking the minimal use as my worst-case scenario, so it's a million and a half versus eight and a half million, and that you would have a 20-year annual principal payments for the governmental portion, which we would finance, it would be callable in 10 years, and take the 20 years of non-governmental, which would be for 20 years, callable in 10 years, to finance that. The advantages, and again, I'm taking your notes for you, is the financings are completed, you're not taking interest rate risk, you're enjoying the market rates of today's market, and the expectation is rates will stay the same, or go higher, but not lower. You have a 10-year call feature, so that in 10 years, you're able to look back and say, okay, this wasn't accurate, that wasn't accurate, and you have the ability to refinance at what happens 10 years from now. The negatives, there's an uncertainty as to the prorata final use. We don't have a plan, and even if we had a plan, that doesn't mean that it's going to be effectuated, that we may have a land for sale, and it just doesn't sell. There's a greater interest expense, because you're paying, I'll have to talk about the other alternative, a 4.02% for that on a consolidated basis for 20-year financing versus a 2.4%. And why is that? Look at option one, maturity structure, II. You have the 20-year equal principal payments, and you finance the governmental use because you know you're going to have that. But then, because you don't really know the project and the amount of the project, you may wish to finance the non-governmental portion, the eight and a half million, with a 20-year amortization, and pay principal payments for years one, two, three, and four, but have the balance for 7.7 million exist as a bullet maturity in the fifth year, with the idea that you could repay from the proceeds of the sale of land. You could refinance any or all of it, to the extent that land hasn't sold, or you have a changed use. And you can determine what portion in five years is governmental use versus non-governmental use, because in five years, you should have a better idea of what happened, because it has happened. The pros, the negatives. Future financing may be required. And I put down the cost of issuance, that it would be a difference, probably only, well, it would cost you two ratings, it would cost you additional $50,000 for cost of issuance to financing five years from now. And so the second negative, additional cost of issuance. And you are taking interest rate risk. What is the market going to be like in five years? However, the 10-year call for the tax-exempt portion still allows you to restructure that in 10 years. The five-year balloon maturity gives you greater certainty as the prorata breakdown as to governmental and non-governmental. For example, if you find that the town actually is going to have 40% of the property, then you refinance your Series B bonds, your taxable bonds, on a tax-exempt basis for that portion. Or then, as I said, in the fifth year, you repay any or all from the sale of the proceeds of the land, and do you want to have 20-year bonds outstanding when you receive the reimbursement for that through the sale of property? On the other hand, if you lease the property, then that lease payments doesn't necessarily defies the bonds, it pays some debt service each year. So the first option is the maturity structure that you may wish to choose. And then the final option is the amortization structure. Typically, a tax-backed project is repaid with equal annual principal amounts. And what happens in that regard is you have the highest principal interest in the first year, and declines every year. But as you overlap different projects, that gives you future purchasing power. So that's why I would have the governmental use, 20 years, equal principal payments in either case. However, if you took the non-governmental use, and you had level principal and interest, then the debt service requirement is reduced, and I showed you here on the bottom of page five, that in the first full year, instead of $876,000 in debt service, when you have the least money and the greatest burden, because ostensibly you haven't sold all of the property yet, you have $875,000 of debt service at level principal versus 750. But that 750 pretty much stays about the same, and the reason it's declining is because I superimposed a non-governmental use to it also. But you can see the difference here, it's $500,000 more in interest, because if you have a level principal interest loan, it's got an average life of 12 years. If you have a level principal loan, it has an average life of 10 years. So if you borrow two more years, you're going to pay more interest. However, the difference on a present value basis, and I cost me two pitchers of beer with a council member of Orno, who is also a mathematics professor at Pat's, to discuss the concept of present value. And so if anybody wants to argue with me, that we can go down the street. Having said that, any present value less than 2% is deemed insignificant. In other words, you're indifferent, that a dollar today is worth 80 cents in 20 years. Therefore, if the present value is lower than 2%, either choice is equally attractive, even though it's more absolute dollars. This present value difference is 0.6%. So that if you have level PNI every year for the taxable portion, or level principal for the taxable portion, then theoretically, you're indifferent on a present value basis. That's the three options, and what I've done here is pages eight, nine, and 10 show the difference. For example, on page nine of 10 versus page 13 of 10, if you could superimpose those two pages, you can see where page nine to 10, on a level principal basis, for the taxable portion, goes from 757,000 down to 434, while the level PNI goes from 632 and stays around the 630,000. So you're saving about $120,000 at a time when you have the least cash flow, because you haven't made the sales yet, and deferring it down the road. So that's if you went forward with a financing that would have long-term financing for both the taxable and the tax-exempt portion for 20 years. And again, were you to have, on page 15 of 20, I show the difference, on page 15 of 20, you see where we have a level principal payment every year for the tax-exempt portion. This is page 15 of 20 on the book. That's why I put the page numbers on, thank God. On the left would be the level principal payments, on the right would be a 20-year amortization of the eight and a half million dollars on a level principal basis, with the idea that in year five, you'd pay a budgetary portion of 425, and then you take the other 6,375,000 that you have that mature, and you either refinance it all, but you have the ability to look back and see which portion's tax-exempt or taxable, even though the whole thing was issued taxable in the first place. You have the ability to pay it off, because you've generated 6.4 million dollars in sales of the property. And so that gives you a choice, and then we do a refunding. Now, interestingly, what Laurie had identified is that because if you're issuing a 20-year financing on a taxable basis versus a 20-year amortization, five-year maturity, and then years six to 15, you're actually paying about $800,000 less in interest. Why? Because if you borrowed the money for the five years, you're paying the one-to-five-year yield curve in the current market about 3%, 3.5%. And then when you're refinancing it, you're paying for a 15-year loan. If you did all 20 years today, you're paying 20 years at the average of a 20-year loan. So interestingly, were you to take advantage of the five-year term maturity, or bullet maturity, for the fifth year on the taxable portion, then you're not borrowing that 6,335 at a 20-year rate, you're borrowing it at the five-year rate. So it actually provides a substantial savings over financing it now. If I were asked for a recommendation, I would probably do it over five years. It gives you options down the road. If you continue, your other option is to just keep doing bands until it matures, until you sell the property. That creates certain levels of uncertainty. Every band's going to cost you more for cost of issuance as you go forward. Yet having the five-year taxable portion with 425,000 maturing each year, it allows you to apply the proceeds from the sale of the property to that debt service for the first year. And then if you find you sold a million dollars worth of property, you set the extra proceeds for future years, so that by the fifth year, you might have all 6,375,000 plus interest available to repay the entire taxable portion. So it gives you options. Did I explain that okay, Laurie?
So I think it'd be a good time, take a breath. And see if they have questions or clarifications on the information you presented.
Yes, sir.
So after five years, that means we're going to, if we took that, we'd have to go ahead and refinance it, but we don't know what the interest rate would be.
That's correct, but to help soften that, instead of borrowing for 20 years, you're borrowing for 15. And so the increase in the yield curve ostensibly might be mitigated by a 15-year loan versus a 20-year loan. Additionally, you're paying $800,000 more in interest by doing it for 20 years. So there's a lot of, and you lose the uncertainty. There's a lot of benefits there that help offset interest rate risk.
Also, Alan, as Joe pointed out, in five years, we will know what part, have a better idea of what part's public and what part is private, and when we refinance.
I'm not against that plan.
Yeah, oh, no, no, I'm just saying, I thought that was actually part, to me, that was the most attractive part of it. We might be able to, you know.
You buy, you win two battles. You win the need to finance it, but you also need the ability to not have it so far out that you've committed yourself to 20 years for something that may not be. Yet five years, you should have a pretty good idea what's. I've done this in Bath, for example, the Wing Farm Project. I've done this for the SAD 28, where there is that uncertainty, and it's entirely possible that refinancing, let's say hypothetically, 40% of the eight and a half million turns out to be for governmental use, instead of financing that taxable, the next 15 years, you finance it on a tax-exempt basis, which is about 100 basis points lower in yield, another factor to help soften it.
I think that you've done an excellent job, and I tried to follow along, but some of it went over my head. But I'm going to take this home for a little light reading.
Laurie is very prescient in that I had provided this tour with no pros and cons or options, and just schedules, and said, how are you going to explain this? And so I hope that by putting some of these down.
You did a great job.
Yes, absolutely.
You did a great job.
Well, one thing you said, that we don't have to make a decision about anything at this point until April?
Well, you need to make a decision.
Soon.
You don't have to do it tonight, Pat, but soon.
Okay, well, I'm trying to figure that.
So that, because we then need to go forward, and it's going to take us some lead time, 15 to 30 days there. So it's imminent, but it's not tonight. Is that a fair statement?
Right. So I think, just to summarize, there are three items that we need to decide, how much we're going to do taxable versus tax-exempt. I mean, we could do the whole bond as taxable, and it would give you the absolute most freedom. I foresee that we are going to keep the town road, so that, to me, makes sense, to do that as tax-exempt. And we put in there a five-acre parcel, not having a particular plan, but thinking that we might keep that much. Keep in mind, if we don't want to, within 10 years, we can change our mind there. But within the acreage, five acres would have to maintain as municipal. So the first option is how much do we want to bond taxable versus tax-exempt? The second issue is how we want to amortize that. And so 20-year bond for the tax-exempt, do you want to do the balloon payment? Do you want to do it for 20 years on the taxable-private piece? And then the third piece would be whether or not we want to do the balloon payment, or create a payment schedule that mirrors the tax-exempt, or have it be a fixed payment? My recommendation would be to do a fixed payment or the balloon payment, one or the other on the private. And I think it certainly makes sense to have what we can be tax-exempt, because that's a financial benefit to us as well. So once we make that decision, we have to, you know, work with Joe. He is putting together an official statement. We would have to have bonding agencies give us a rating call, and give us a rating, and then we have to go out on the open market. So that's about a 45-day window after you make your decision.
But we also get to keep the wetlands, right?
Well, the wetlands, we could keep, but it would require quite a bit, I mean, staff has spent a considerable amount of time trying to analyze this in a number of ways. We would have to certainly keep it. It would, it requires to survey all of that, put that in deed work. And then, secondly, it brings up the issue of the fair market value. It also creates some zoning issues, because even though the wetland may not be developable, it counts towards acreage in people's lots. So we think, at the end of the day, staff is saying, we don't think that's the way to go. to go. It's keep the road, perhaps keep a parcel, and then do the rest taxable, because it gives you the most options.
Are we here, Dave?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Happy Valentine's Day.
All right. Moving on. Agenda item number nine, approve the construction bid award for the Ocean Avenue Seawall Project and a contract modification for Woodward and Curran to provide construction administration services for the Ocean Avenue Seawall Project. Mike, do you have anything to say?
We received, we received two bids for that. We did have a pre-bid meeting, and six contractors came to that meeting, but only two actually submitted bids. The low bid was Shaw Brothers out of Westbrook, excuse me, out of Gorham. Seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred dollars was their base bid. And the other bidder was Sargent Corporation out of Stillwater for 1,125,385. Both are very good companies, but we're very happy that Shaw Brothers came in low, so we are recommending Shaw Brothers. As far as the alternate bid, there was an alternate component we put in there because we're replacing the culvert by the Rinaldi's residence, the old Booth Tarkington boathouse. We've got to replace about 20 feet. In the contract, we're replacing about 20 feet of the sewer main to get that culvert Shaw Brothers bid $52,000 to replace the entire section of pipe from manhole to manhole in front of the Rinaldi residence. But we're, I don't think, we don't think, in talking to the sewer department, that piece of pipe there, we'd probably slip line that at a cheaper price and look to replace other sections of pipe on Ocean Avenue right there. We're doing a fiscal sustainability plan right now, and we'll have numbers in June for that. And there is money, the sewer department has a reserve fund, and we'll be presenting a plan for that once we get our plan in. And that'll be in June. So if we need to coordinate things with Shaw Brothers, we can do that.
Mike, we did talk about in the future, doing work on those sewer pipes down there anyways, didn't we?
Yes. It is a pretty high priority for us, but I think we can do our, have our plan, our sustainability plan done, come up with a plan for you, present it to you, and still get in schedule.
I mean, my point here was that $52,000 was not gonna negate the fact that we still had to do work down there in the future.
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Very good.
So that motion was to accept the bid or to accept the bid and authorize. He's asked for a second thing, which is to authorize a contract amendment.
It's about 35,000?
Yep, for the administration.
So you're actually looking for 887, correct? 387,000?
If you've done the math, I trust you.
That's what I heard.
That's what I like. I like that number.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. We've already, we've already voted, because that's what I heard.
That's what we voted on.
Yes, that's exactly what we voted on. Okay, yeah, don't go anywhere, Mike. Number 10 is to award the effluent, influent valves necessary to complete the effluent, effluent pump upgrade. Say that three times fast.
So Paul Jessel and Chris Samioli have gotten four prices, actually, for replacing these valves, control valves at the wastewater plant. It's part of, it's part of repairs that we've identified or renovations we've identified that are very important. And we want to get ahead of the work on the clarifiers, get these done. So we actually, we want to get the, we want to get the valves purchased and here so that when the contractors come in to do more work on the plant as we're coming, as we're planning, that these will be available. So that's why we bid these ahead of time. So we're recommending the low bidder, which is Ferguson Waterworks, for 27,289 and 35 cents.
I would move that we would accept Mike's recommendation.
What do you say? Do you move it?
Yes.
Okay, second.
All in favor? So moved. Thank you, Mike. Okay, number 11, discuss the FY '20 solid waste contract and recycling charges. Orion, turn this over to you for a minute.
I'm staying here.
Oh, you, you.
Right. So the current contract we have with Oceanside, who is now Casella, expires on August 30th of this year. And so we have been in contact with the company in order to ascertain what we might anticipate for costs for the coming fiscal year budget. As part of those discussions, they made quite clear in the beginning that the recycling market has changed dramatically, and that we could anticipate additional charges for recycling processing. What has happened is certainly the markets have changed, and that as of today, we received a memo that EcoMaine is now charging a non-member communities, which is us, $130 a ton for the processing of recycling. So part of the discussion is what we want to do for next year, the impacts potentially of the budget. With the current information we have, we can anticipate that our current solid waste contract would go up by 25 to 30%, probably in the range of 70,000.
Our, just, our current contract, we are paying zero to process recyclings for at EcoMaine. We pay for the haul, but no, there's no tipping charge.
So I'm gonna just let Mike take over at this point and talk about the specifics and what we see are our options at this point.
So currently, we recycle every other week, and we pay a collection cost, our current collection cost.
It's about $43,000.
Yes, I'm looking at my iPhone. $43,071 is what we're paying.
Annually.
So that would go away if you didn't do recycling. But then you still have, and you would have, we do about 400 tons of recycling a year. So that would, that would end up being trash, which you'd have to pay for at $75 a ton. We have options. We could try to set up a bin at Public Works for people to put material that was actually And that, you know, that would save a little bit of money that, you know.
Well, we currently collect cardboard, I understand, at Dock Square, and I know we do at Bradbury's in Cape Orpus.
So our deal with that is we're paying $11,000 and 380, $11,384 for the transportation of that, of those recyclables. We don't pay any tipping for that. We just, they, the cardboard goes, you know, they make, they make, they keep the money on the cardboard.
But it's been my understanding, and even, and you know, from when, what was the gentleman's name that used to own Oceanside?
Carl Exte.
Yeah, when Carl came and talked to us, and in my own reading and listening to the radio, that most of what we recycle doesn't even get recycled anymore. It's just going somewhere else to, you know, we're recycling, it's going into a landfill, basically.
The issue is contamination at EcoMaine is that our single-source recyclables are coming up there, they're looking at them and go, these are not, there's plastic, there's plastic that is unrecyclable that's mixed in there. The paper, the paper may have contamination in it by having, like, carbon paper. And all these things are, make, make the commodity useless, essentially. And they, if they can't sell it, they have to burn it.
Well, and there's also the fact that China no longer accepts the world's recycling. You know, they changed their laws, and we no longer wish to be the world's dump. I can't say that I blame them, but, you know, that certainly had a big effect. A lot of, some of the articles that I've read, a lot of things that we recycle here go to the West Coast to be shipped to China, and they, they just bury them.
Mike, do we have a statistic? I'm all in favor, you know, obviously, of recycling, if it's really being recycled. If it's not being recycled, then why spend all that extra money for it? Do we have a statistic that tells us or instructs us as to what percentage of our recycling material is rejected because of contamination?
We, we haven't been paying anything, so we would not get that. In the future, the, in the future, what EcoMaine is telling their customers is they're gonna be graded as they come in, and their, their fee will be based on how much contamination is in the, in the load. So, you know, I don't, you know.
That's on every load, right?
On every load.
Every load will be different.
I mean, the problem is when we talk about contamination, it's not just about dirty. It's the fact that the only things that they're able to sell right now are corrugated cardboard and metal and aluminum, and then soda bottles, which most people are returning anyway because of the refund, and, you know, like, a plastic from a milk jug. So if you have all that other plastic, all that mixed paper, newspapers, all that is contaminating the load because they have to pick through that. And then they have to process that. And process that means that all those things they can't recycle go into a waste stream. And they are spending time and energy. So, I mean, to me, the concern is that we're gonna be paying for, quote, recycling when the materials aren't gonna be recycled. So one option is we can stay the course, do what we're doing, understanding we're paying a higher cost for most of our recycling going in the waste stream. Right now, our recycling rate is about 14% of our total waste. Secondly, we could eliminate recycling, that's the other end of the spectrum, and everything that we go, we collect would go right into the waste stream at 75, 50 a ton. And we would actually save money from what we're spending now. And then, you know, the middle of the road is we could tell people that we're, we're not gonna collect recycling anymore, we're gonna have a place where they can drop off the very limited amounts that are something that can be actually sold, and so hence, we would hopefully not pay the $130 a ton. We'd still have to pay for transportation, and we could recycle what makes sense to recycle. But again, that would take an education effort with people as well.
Well, isn't there one other aspect? If we no longer recycle, then we don't have to pay for that service.
We, if we don't, if we don't send the truck around, then we don't have to pay for that, for the labor and the truck. That is true, yep.
And we would then pay.
So even though you're paying more in tonnage for waste, you're not paying for the, for the truck transport, yep.
But we also pay, if it's in the regular stream, it's at a lower rate anyway.
It is.
Correct. So that's two ways to say.
I think the first, that this was brought up here before this board, as I said, when the gentleman from Oceanside came in, is I had asked to put money into the budget to recycle weekly, thinking that that was the right thing to do, when, you know, at that time, we as a board were made aware that most of what we're recycling isn't even being recycled, you know, given various factors. So, yes, David?
Yeah, question. There's no chance that a fourth option would be to revise the roadside pickup of recycling, but limit it to the faceboard and glass and metal only, and eliminate the plastics and all the rest of the crap that they, they can't recycle?
We could, but will people do that? And I mean, we're probably already getting contaminants.
I think our concern is that if we continue to pick it up, that people will still put things out there that will contaminate the load, and then we'll have to pay the $130 a ton.
And wouldn't you have the same problem if you set up a bin someplace to collect stuff?
Certainly, that is something that we've talked about. I mean, it's an education effort either way, but I think if you have one bin that clearly is marked this only, you're probably gonna lessen that impact.
I think you're also gonna see it lessened by the fact that if someone is having to proactively take their recyclable materials, they're making an effort. And so they're probably performing and behaving at a higher, more accurate level.
Well, we have one place in Cape Orpus that's been doing quite well, correct? Hasn't been contaminated at all or anything. They all just, they just take cardboard.
It's the cardboard.
I asked Carl that this morning. He said they've had no issues with either Bradbury's or Dock Square. All that material has been.
It's all cardboard, correct?
All cardboard.
But newspapers no longer recyclable, or?
Not, it doesn't, there's no market out there.
Does anybody still read the newspaper? Okay.
Occasionally, one or two, yeah.
So number two would be simply one-day recycling and put everything in the garbage?
Yeah.
That would be one option, yes.
It's cheaper in the long run, believe it or not.
Yeah.
I mean, the real question is.
Cheaper financially. I don't know, is it cheaper environmentally?
It's a catch, well, it's not a catch-22, but it's very difficult, because we all think we're doing the right thing by recycling and saving the planet, et cetera, et cetera. And then if we find out we're really not doing that, it still feels bad to me to say, well, we're just not gonna do it at all, even though that's really what's gonna happen anyways. You know, unless people are highly disciplined.
One of the things that I fear, Dave, is that we pay the difference between the 70, whatever, and the 130 as a feel-good measure versus any meaningful benefit to the environment or to recycling as a principled activity.
When we, when we last met with Carl, you know, I said to him, well, why would anybody keep recycling with this financial news? And, you know, he brought up a good point, that we've spent a long time educating people to recycle, and so people are in that mode. So there is some benefit there, you know, in terms of human behavior modification that you don't want to try and lose. I think the question is, is this a blip? Or, you know, people have said to me, well, is the market gonna change, or can't we make a difference? And it's like, sure, you know, if the market changes and there's a demand to use recycled goods and, and, you know, people invent new ways, I mean, but that's not something that's gonna happen in the short term. And I think the people are also missing that there's, you know, when you look, think of the recycling triangle, the three arrows, the first two on that are reduce and reuse. And we've been very focused on the recycle part, but we really need to reduce.
If you, if you look at what we're paying for in our trash, food waste is a big component. And, you know, if we, if you were to say, what's your bang for your buck for reducing, composting is your, is your, easily your biggest bang for the buck. So, you know, if we're looking to do things, we can look at educational programs and compost, compost bin programs. I mean, if we're looking to get our waste costs down and reduce our impact, if I were to tell you, what, what do we want to do?
And those programs aren't free, but South Portland has a very successful composting program, both at their transfer station as well as getting picked up. So there are things communities are doing. It's just not magic. When people put their trash at the end of the driveway, they think they've done their job, but the reality is, this is the situation. So we are trying our best to put together the final budget numbers for presentation, and this has become quite a sticking point for us. And that's why we just wanted to talk to you and get some feedback on, you know, what, what direction you think we should be going.
Do you have a recommendation as to where you think you want to land? Should we reserve money aside for recycling plan that, you know, but to be determined whether, how we execute it? You know, obviously, I don't think we have enough data today to say, yeah, we definitely want to do that plan. But I also don't want to tie your hands from a budget perspective, so that when we do land on something, if it's a few dollars more, or if there's a greater expense, you don't have anything there for it.
Sure, yeah.
I think the likelihood of finding something out new in the near term is probably not very high, if any. In other words, we've gotta think about what we want to do for this budget year, and since we don't think we know anymore about recycling and what's, what can be sold and what can be reused and so forth. You look at the bottom line, and it says, you know, put everything in the garbage and pay a lower rate, and don't have to pay for the recycle truck to come around.
How about if we just recycle cardboard?
Yes, we're doing that now.
I know, but I mean, and we haven't had a problem recycling cardboard, correct?
You're saying, continuing to do it in those locations?
Right, yeah.
That makes sense.
And call it a day.
Well, I don't think that's gonna go away.
No.
I mean, I would feel a little better if we didn't vote on this tonight, and we voted on it at our next meeting.
You don't need to have a vote tonight, do you, Laurie, on this?
I don't need a vote.
You can pencil that money into your budget, and then at our next meeting, we can make our final decision. But if there's people at home who have some information or feel strongly about this, I would rather that they were able to come and say to us, I mean, this, people get emotional about recycling and.
Can we be reassured or guaranteed that if we do away with recycling, except maybe for the cardboard, that it does go to ground fill or incineration and doesn't get dumped in a barge and hauled out to the ocean and dumped?
I don't think any of our trash gets dumped.
Well, that's happening worldwide.
Yeah, but I.
But we don't control.
I think most of, Mike, where does, yeah, I don't think they're dumping stuff. I mean, I'm on the ocean a lot, and I don't see barges full of trash going by.
Okay, but I know what's happening in a lot of countries around the world.
Yeah, I mean, maybe in some of the bigger cities, but no, I don't see, I see things in the ocean when I'm out lobstering, but there are things people threw overboard, not things that were dumped off of.
Landfill is not unlimited, I mean.
Of course not.
But you're talking incineration. Our, like, is our debris, our trash, our refuse, our our solid stuff that's taken away, it's burned, right? Or how is it dealt with?
It goes to EcoMaine. EcoMaine has a incinerator when you go in there with your truck. One goes to the recycling, uh, facility, or you can go to the incinerator.
But they don't ship it elsewhere or take or transfer it?
Not that we are aware of.
Thanks.
When would you like, when you need to notify? Soon, I know.
By your next meeting, your budget will be in hand.
Okay.
So, um, I'm certainly looking for some feedback. I'm thinking, to me, you know, um, the middle of the road seems like a fair approach, where we, um, attempt to allow people to recycle. I think we need some money for education. Um, and I think if people are very interested, uh, in this and wanna put together a food waste program or other ways, you know, maybe we have a committee that helps work on that, you know? Um, the comprehensive plan survey just came back, and I would say environmental issues are a big concern to our citizens.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so to just say not to recycle at all, that doesn't seem to be in tune with their values, no.
No, but like I said, it's simply a feel-good measure.
Right, and I am, but I would never recommend that we pretend that life is green and gro- rosy, and we know that, uh, at night, we're paying a hundred and thirty dollars a ton so we can go in the incinerator.
Yeah.
There's a point of donation returns, for sure.
I mean, I, if it, if it's real recycling, I'm all over it.
Yes.
So...
As I said, I asked to do it every week, and that was when it was brought to my attention that that wasn't a good idea, and the fact that it was even said at that meeting that recycling in our current form might go away, and here we are tonight. But, um, very, very difficult. I think ultimately, as consumers, each and every one of us is responsible to demand that we buy things that come either in recyclable or biodegradable. I mean, the straw movement, if you will, you know, it seems a little silly until I heard about how many straws were being used every day, and it actually, it makes a lot of sense. And you see, uh, plastic straws going away. And maybe the things that we buy our laundry detergent in won't be plastic in ten years, maybe they'll find something better, something biodegradable to make it out of, et cetera, et cetera. But, is there any more discussion this evening? Oh, well, he's, he's waiting for the next, do you have something to say?
Actually, I would like to, I would like to.
Oh, absolutely, I'm sorry.
It is not in my position to actually make a, make a point. I live in Dover, I work in South Berwick, I'm, I'm not connected to Kennebunkport in any way, but I wanted to throw a certain model to your consideration that I've observed in South Berwick. Uh, the cost of the curb pickup of recyclables was eliminated by creating a town dump, uh, to which all the residents of South Berwick just drop off their recyclables freely by, by will, by their will, um, at just no charge. That way, the cost of curb, curb pickup was eliminated and savings were made. Now, the efficiency of, uh, of costs of recycling is sort of dependable of the population of the community. South Berwick, I believe, is roughly twelve thousand, and that's why the town made a decision to, uh, still keep recycling, but make it a little bit cheaper, but reducing the cost of the curb pickup. Suffice it to say, just the truck and the labor, uh, which is just another model I wanted to throw to your consideration that I've observed, uh, in, in the town of South Berwick. Thank you.
Thanks. Don't go anywhere, you're up next.
Okay.
Um, yes, uh, and that may be something, in fact, we were at one time known for having America's number one dump, and there's some of us who still miss that dump.
And the parade.
Yes.
I missed the parade, I don't want to.
I missed, you don't miss the dump, go to the dump as a kid and come home with more stuff than you brought?
That's right.
Okay.
Well, in fact, the South Berwick dump is, as funny as it may sound, it's, it's a social place, you know?
Yes, absolutely.
Neighbors out there, there's a swap shop, I got my favorite beer cup there, so, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I think that in, in this, you know, in the twenty-first century, this isn't very politically correct, but I think they formed the Dump Association that said it's a good place to drink beer and shoot rats. I think that was the reason that they had started it in the nineteen fifties. Today, probably not so politically correct, but...
Understood.
Uh, okay, so number twelve, authorize a right-of-way agreement for one twenty-four Ocean Avenue Mabel's Restaurant.
I'm gonna refuse myself because they're my neighbors.
Okay. Very well.
Hi, so I'm David Blue, I'm the lawyer, uh, working on this case, uh, my office is in New York. Sunny Natarajan is here, he's the owner of the restaurant, the new owner, and Michael Colletta here from Lassell Associates, the architect firm that worked on this and produced these plans. Um, so, the, the reason we're here tonight, we're asking you to approve an ex, uh, an agreement that would allow, uh, the continued use of a, an existing deck and awning at the front of the, uh, Mabel's Restaurant. Uh, a recent boundary survey of the property revealed to us, uh, and this is after we, after the property was purchased, uh, and before we started any improvements at, uh, at, at this location, uh, that we knew where the boundaries were. So we discovered that the deck and the awning, uh, encroach on, uh, Ocean Ave, uh, a little bit, and so wanted to make sure that, uh, we addressed this situation with the town right away. Uh, so we began communications with Town Manager Smith, uh, and, uh, we, we were referred to Amy Chaw, the attorney for, for the town, uh, who drafted an agreement that deals with a very common agreement that I've seen before, uh, that deals with situations like this where encroachment exists, uh, town's interest in, in the right-of-way is important, uh, and should be respected. And, um, so the agreement, uh, we worked out, uh, it should be in your package, I, do you, do you, do you have a copy of that? Okay, great. So, um, what it does is, um, make clear that, uh, the improvements, uh, as shown on these plans, uh, are permitted, any, any, uh, but nothing beyond that. Any, any, uh, improvements that extend beyond what we're asking for here, uh, would have to come back to the board for approval. This basically puts, um, puts this use, legitimizes it, puts a cap on it, and makes it clear that any, any changes beyond that would have to come back to the board before they, uh, occur. Uh, and as I said, the, the agreement incorporates by reference these plans, I'm gonna have Michael, uh, talk, uh, answer any questions you might have, any, if you have any detailed questions about the plans, um, I'll let Michael respond to those, but, um, and if you have any questions about the agreement, the legal agreement that, uh, worked together with Amy and, uh, Laurie, then, uh, please ask, yeah. One thing I do wanna emphasize is that the, we're trying to minimize the sort of, uh, aesthetic look, uh, changes the aesthetic look of this awning and deck, uh, but the, currently, the awning does not extend completely over the deck, it, there's a couple, it's a couple of feet short, uh, and we're concerned that it might create a, a, a safety hazard, uh, increase the possibility of tripping and that sort of thing through, uh, so I think we're gonna, what, what we're proposing here is to just make sure that the deck, uh, and the awning are equidistant from the, uh, from the, from the building coming out. Uh, any questions of me, otherwise I'll turn it over to Michael.
I, I believe that in the agreement that it, uh, the town retains the right to take back the right-of-way, should it become necessary in the future?
That's true.
Yes.
That is true.
Okay.
And this, this agreement is in alignment with another agreement that we've done.
Yes.
With another property owner.
I have no problems with it whatsoever, in fact, um, do, any, any other discussion? Go ahead.
Well, I was gonna wait till they're finished with the presentation.
Anything you wanna add?
Sure. Thank you, David. Um, the point of our design is actually to have minimum impact on what is there as currently. Uh, our goal is improvement and refreshment rather than change. Everybody knows Mabel's Restaurant and, uh, everybody likes it. We keep to maintain the, the same atmosphere, the same feel, and the same clientele, everybody's welcome. Uh, so, uh, the, the refreshment and improvement will be mostly to make, make the deck a little bit more feasible. Our awning will now be covering the entire deck. As far before, it was letting the last two feet closest to the street being exposed to the atmosphere and also becoming sort of a tripping hazard. Right now, the deck will be flush, I'm sorry, the, uh, awning will be flush with the deck itself, uh, causing it to be a little bit more pronounced, uh, simply because it became longer by that foot and a half or two feet, uh, it had to be a little bit more pronounced. Uh, the fabric of the deck will be just refreshed, like I said before, our goal is to minimize the changes and, uh, just introduce refreshments and, um, and improvements. Uh, the material of the deck also will be changed, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, the material will maintain, just, you know, it will be a new deck out of the same material. I believe that's, that's all I wanted to add.
Okay, uh, well, you know, I, I do have some questions because, looking at your drawing, uh, the, the awning supports that you've got at, say, the four corners, uh, are they mounted on the ground or how do you, are they permanent, or what are they?
They will be removable, those are steel tubes that are placed directly on the deck.
Placed where?
Placed on the deck.
On the deck itself?
On the deck itself.
So the, what is the deck made out of?
It's the wood composite, uh, so...
Like Trax or one of those branded?
Trax, yeah, one of the, the more modern, uh, components, yeah.
A wood look composite.
Sure, no, I understand that, no, it makes sense to do that. I just wanted to be sure that there wasn't a permanent foundation under, like, poured concrete or something out there, because that would be, in essence, you know, putting something of a permanent nature in the right-of-way, which is not what we had in mind.
No, the intention is to keep it as, uh, removable, as movable as possible.
It's, um, you know, the deck is, right now, you know, it has a wood base, just like a deck back in the house.
Yeah, right.
And it's a little uneven, so the, the goal is to replace the, the deck.
Right.
With the new wood, the same, uh, material, and level the floor there so that, you know, customers don't...
Sure, no, that makes sense.
And the idea is to extend the deck is because right now, if you really see, it's not even covering the whole, you know, deck that is there.
You mean to extend the awning, not the deck?
Yeah, and we need that because it's a safety issue, I feel, you know, people serve us, serving food there, I think it makes sense to have that extension a little bit, and it is within the deck that we have already, so it's not gonna, and we did talk to the municipal people about, uh, snow plowing and all, they were fine with that, they said they have no issues, I was going that far. And, uh, I think the idea is to come up with a little better ambiance, you know, it needed the job.
Oh, yeah, sure.
So, we are doing a lot of work in the kitchen and upgrading the place in terms of, you know, making sure people are more comfortable, bathrooms and...
Well, I'm glad to see that you're, you're keeping the, the ambiance that has existed.
Absolutely.
Before, but you're just putting more modern materials in it. I just wanted to be sure that because it is the public, the town's right-of-way, that there, you're not putting, we just got rid of a telephone pole that was in the middle of the road down here, and so I'm very sensitive to stuff that's in, in the right-of-way.
Right.
No, that's our, that's our role.
The deck will be exactly the same size. That's right, the deck doesn't change, in fact, our perimeter of the design was the survey.
It'll take three hours to take it down.
Three hours to take?
Take it down, the deck.
Oh, it comes up in what, part, components?
You can just take the deck down and the wood, you can just take it out.
No, you're talking about rebuilding it, Pat.
As far as now, it is the wood composite that can be just taken down and will replace it with a similar material, also the wood composite, but to answer your question, Mr. Bricks, the, there will be no permanent foundation, no poured concrete, no asphalt.
Yeah.
And the understanding is that, you know, the town, the town can take the right-of-way permit anytime, so that this has to be disassemblable as much as it can be. And that's the intention.
Well, yeah, that's fine, I, I, I think that's a good solution, I'm glad to hear that's what you're doing, but, you know, people find out because of the way snow comes here, uh, when the plows come by, you may be replacing fences year after year after year, just 'cause you're right there.
That's why we did have a chat, you know, with a local, and we figured out what we needed.
Mike, you're good with this?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
There, I'm happy.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you very much, son.
Thank you. Good luck with your season. Okay, moving on, number thirteen, uh, once again, we're here to discuss, to, uh, consider, request to accept Reed Lane as a public street. Um, Laurie or Mike, do you wish to speak to this, or would you like me to handle it?
Uh, Mike will come up, and we'll do a tag team.
Okay.
Um, as you know, last time, uh, we discussed Reed Lane, there were concerns about easements necessary for snow storage as well as, um, curb cuts that were needed in order to, uh, do winter maintenance. Um, the selectmen had established a policy regarding, uh, the acceptance of public streets. Um, I think that there are a fair number of people who have, um, felt that Reed Lane was put in the middle of that policy. You know, I just also wanna clarify that nowhere ever did it say that the selectman would always accept a street that went through a subdivision process. So it was always a question of whether it would become a public street or not. So at this point, I'm going to just let Mike, um, hit on the changes that have been made in terms of the curb cuts and the maintenance.
So we, we talked about snow storage areas, and, uh, we'd suggested some, some spots, and we've gotten easements for those spots, uh, cuts in the concrete curb have been made so that you could put snow there. We don't know how it's gonna work, um, they've been pla, they've been, uh, moving snow in the subdivision with a tractor with a snowballer, so they've been doing a very nice job pulling the snow off the side of the road. Um, we don't, we don't have a tractor and a snowballer, if you'd like to get us one, we'll take it.
Next year.
What about your Trax machine there?
Well, they, they're using a nice wide, I mean, it's a wide, you know, like, six, six or eight foot wide snowbars, the tractor does a good job, we just have, ours is, is set for a sidewalk width.
Gotcha.
So one of the things also in Turner Porter's letter is that he has requested that, um, the town take the street, the sidewalk, um, any street lights, as well as all underground utilities. Um, staff would not recommend taking, um, those additional pieces, um, and when we discussed this with the town attorney, um, as we looked over the documents that Turner Porter had presented to us, um, Amy brought up the idea, uh, along with staff, that we might consider a maintenance agreement, um, rather than taking the road as a fee interest in, in the property. So if the selectmen were so inclined, that might be a better route because of those, uh, additional, um, utilities, et cetera, to clarify that for future generations.
I mean, I don't believe they've maintained the sidewalks this winter, and I, I don't think sidewalk maintenance is really, I, I don't speak to the residents, but they...
Yeah, I don't think there's any interest in taking anything other than the road itself. We don't want any lights, we don't want any sewer, we don't want any underground, like, uh, utilities. You know, if we were, I think, if we were to, if we were to put this out to the voters, let's be clear, it's not up to the, well, the four of us this evening to, to accept this, this will go on a warrant, and the, um, the voters in, in June will give it the thumbs up or the thumbs down.
Specifically on the, on the sewer, uh, you know, Chris asked me to just mention, we do not, we would not want that sewer.
No, no, we don't do that, absolutely not, um, and you are right to point that out. Uh, do you think you can plow the road?
Yeah, we can, we can plow the road.
You can, okay.
You don't have an issue with this?
No, I...
The acceptance of the road?
I think there are challenges that will be. This is not, if we were to design a road, this is not how we would have designed it for winter maintenance, I wanna be crystal clear about that. But they have made the changes that we think we can do it. I think the other issue is we have to be clear as well with the maintenance agreement that at the end of the cul-de-sac, there is a private extension there for, um, another lot, and that, that will present some challenges. But Mike and his crew have looked at it, and if that's the intent of the selectmen and the town, they will do their, their best.
So, if, if I could just offer my thoughts on it, um, this one, this particular, um, road came up during the middle of our conversations, and, you know, however we land on this particular situation, shouldn't be presumed to telegraph our intentions moving forward. Uh, we came up with a, an adjustment to our philosophy on acceptance of roads, um, but had not telegraphed that, uh, at the time that this particular subdivision was being developed. And so with that in mind, I'm of a mind to, to support accepting the road, um, you know, with all the stipulations and conditions that Mike, uh, has mentioned and that Laurie has mentioned, uh, simply because, uh, during the process leading up to the construction and all along the way, there was communication, there was an intention conveyed, um, that the road be a town road, and we didn't at any point along the way say, oh, we have no interest in taking on town roads anymore. So, uh, I'm personally of a mind to accept the road, uh, or recommend that the voters So I'm personally of a mind to accept the road, or recommend that the voters accept this particular road, but I would want it to be pretty clear that that is not a departure from our previously stated position on the acceptance of roads moving forward. So there you have it.
I agree with you, Stuart. I won't reiterate because I can't speak as well as you, but yes, that's my feeling too.
So you're thinking about just plowing the road, and that's it?
Maintaining, paving it if necessary.
Paving it, but it's brand new, so it's going to be a while.
Be a while.
In a way that we've typically traditionally taken on roads from subdivisions, just the road.
Okay.
And that's it.
Not the sewer, not the sidewalks, not the landfills.
No, we don't take sewer easements or any of that. We'd never, I don't believe we've done that in the past.
But in a manner consistent with our previous behavior.
Yeah. You know, I'm not in favor of doing it, but I do agree with the fact that, you know, this kind of got pushed into the middle of, you know, our discussion to move away from taking private subdivision roads. And I had promised, you know, I had a discussion after our last meeting with some of the residents, and I promised them, as the chairman, if they did what we had asked, that I would bring this back, and that's why we're seeing this tonight.
So we won't, we would not be taking over the road? The road would not be ours?
No, we would take over the road. Just the road itself, the pavement, yes.
So what we're suggesting from staff level is if you were, that you would do a maintenance agreement rather than take the road as a town park.
Yeah, we're not going to own it. We're not going to have a fee interest in it.
But you can, you can take the whole road if you want.
No, we're not going to take the road.
It's just that the deed would have a lot of exceptions in it.
I think the road maintenance is the way to go.
Maintenance agreement is...
Yeah, I don't think we need to own the road.
No.
I don't see any upside to anybody in that.
Dave?
David?
I don't have any problem with accepting the responsibility for snow plowing on the road. I don't know about the maintenance of the road itself, but I just remind you, the last two winters, we haven't had a whole lot of snow, and I remind you of 2014, 2015, when we had sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety inches of snow. And plowing the road is one thing, getting rid of the snow that you piled up on the side of the road.
That's why we had to put, ask them to put the snow dumps in.
All right, so whatever agreement you come up with, I think you need to put a limit in there on your liability for removing snow when you get one of these Super Blizzards.
I don't think that we can do that because...
I mean, we have a hard time clearing the roads, main roads.
We have to treat them the same as we've treated anyone else in the past, is my thing. We don't have any agreements with other, you know, subdivisions, which are now private roads, where we say, no, we're going to stop after so many inches. I just, this is Maine. Some winters, we get a lot of snow. I've lived here fifty years, my whole life. Sometimes we get a lot of snow, sometimes we don't get any. That's living on the coast of Maine.
In the crafting of the agreement, I think we can, Laurie and Mike will certainly view, look at those things. They called out the fact that the snow dumps were needed, so obviously, you know, it doesn't serve anyone's interest to not have any place for the snow. So I think that, you know, the town, as well as the residents of that subdivision, will find some happy place to land.
It'd be mine if we had a lot worse winters, and we'd have less...
Oh, don't remind us. Please don't.
Let's hope we're not in store for it soon.
We could live in Caribou. Yes.
Excuse me. Hi, I'm, hello, everybody. I'm Judy Phillips. I'm at sixteen Reed Lane, and I'm just on behalf of all the neighbors, we wanted to thank you for reconsidering this, and we really appreciate it.
Well, we want to thank you, and I would like to point this out because it was mentioned after our last meeting, that, you know, just how polite all of you were, and that nobody came out and, you know, raised their voice or, you know, took any of what we had to say personally, and we respect that. And I would like to think, well, that is not the reason we brought it back, but it certainly didn't hurt.
Collaboration and partnership's always a better way to go than adversarial.
Yeah, you know, because, you know, we are not, you know, the five of us who sit here, this, you know, we're not getting overly paid to do this job, and, well, we do it because we love our community, just as you do, and we do appreciate the fact that you came out tonight to speak, and that you came out before, and that it was a very civil conversation. So that said, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
So just to clarify, the most...
Maintenance agreement as proposed by you and Mike.
For summer and winter maintenance.
And that this is to put it on the warrant.
And to put it on the town.
Yes, it is not that, we do not have the authority, as you know, to accept it. That is up to the tax, to the residents. So, motion? Second. All those in favor? Thank you for coming out tonight. Okay. Okay. Number fourteen, the great food truck. Unfortunately, that is not coming our way. There were some technical difficulties, and they're not going to be able to come down and serve us food next week. Number fifteen, authorization to enter into proposed ordinance revision for town meeting warrant, street numbering ordinances, and the marijuana retail moratorium. Do you wish to speak to that, Laurie?
So Chief Everett couldn't be here tonight because he's working his other job. But the, in the packet, you have the amendments to the street ordinance. They are, there was a memo that highlights the differences when we are applying the street ordinance to the project at Kings Highway. We came across some additional issues, and we'd like to do this once, the renumbering, rather than come back again later. So we're just trying to clean up everything possible. If you are in agreement that we should move forward, we'll continue to bring it back so that people can comment on it, and we will send it to the attorney for review.
Sounds good to us.
Yeah.
Yes, we don't want to do this two or three times. It's already been done two or three times, and here we are again, doing it again.
Yeah. In terms of item B, you will remember that in November, we voted on a moratorium for medical retail sales on marijuana. The moratorium was to give us 180 days to review how it might impact us and to propose ordinance amendments. Since that time, the state law changed regarding medical caregiver retail, and now the law says that rather being a default, that it is allowed, the default is it is not allowed. And so a community would have to have a regulation that allows it to occur. So currently, if we do nothing, medical retail shops would not be allowed.
Yep.
And so rather than just let that sit out there, we don't need to do anything, I wanted to make sure you're aware of it, because if you want us to adopt regulation to allow it, then we would need to be working on that.
I'm all, I like it just the way it is.
Yep.
We're good.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Laurie. Okay, number sixteen, the event you've all been waiting for. Set the 2019 fees for Goose Rock's Beach parking stickers. The current fees are resident, five, for seasonal resident, which is the only one we have, five dollars, non-resident daily, fifteen dollars, non-resident weekly, fifty dollars, and non-resident seasonal, one hundred dollars. Do I have any...
Well, it's interesting to compare what we charge with what they charge in Kennybunk, and we're kind of not, it sort of, to me, it says you can come over and visit us because it's cheaper to do it, and we've got a nice beach, you know, and I just think that we ought to have some parity with what they're charging and what we would be charging for the non-residents.
Well, for the non-residents here, I have the fees going back to 2002, and we haven't changed the, we changed the daily from six to twelve in 2009, and the weekly from twenty-five to fifty in 2009, and then again, the seasonal from fifty to a hundred in 2009. So it's, it's been ten years. I don't see that it's, I don't have a problem with going up on the non-residents.
Right.
I might have a problem with going up on residents.
Yeah, leave the residents alone, but...
Yeah, I wouldn't do the resident.
But I really think we need to increase the non-residents' fees.
So how about, this, I, these were the notes I had written down. So we'll leave residents at five dollars.
Right.
We'll go to non-resident daily, twenty-five dollars, non-resident weekly, a hundred, and non-resident seasonal, two hundred. That's pretty much in line with the folks on around the other side of the river are dealing.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Alan, you have?
Non-residents.
I don't, I'm not really good with it.
No.
Having grown up in New Jersey where there was no charge on the beaches, I have a problem with it.
Yeah, but they charge a lot more for property taxes in New Jersey, too.
I just have a hard time doubling it. I really do.
It's, the issue isn't as much, it's not a fee for using the beach, it's a fee for using the very limited, which are limited by ordinance, number of parking spaces that are available.
In Kenny, in Goose Rock's.
And so the competition already is very high for those spaces. It's just, you know, it's a place where we haven't gone up in ten years that we probably have room to. We don't have a lot of room in so many other areas to go up. You know, I'm firm in thinking that residents shouldn't, but I do think that perhaps when we have a commodity like that, that is in need of management and constraint, using fees to constrain the demand a little bit is not a terrible way to go.
Well, you know, my point was that you've got such a disparity between what they charge in Kennybunk and here, that the, to me, it would be attractive to come to Goose Rock's Beach because you can get a sticker for a half price.
I agree. It's supply and demand.
Well, but you're talking about two different beaches, too. You know, we have a beach at High Tide, whereas Kennybunk really doesn't anymore.
Let's not get into this.
Yes, we won't go down there.
I think, you know, another point is just that we spend a fair amount of time in the summer on issues we needed to, Goose Rock's Beach, whether it's the police department, myself, or the chief.
Did you say just in the summer?
Yeah.
Related to the beach use. And so if, you know, our labor costs have certainly increased over that time, and if a user fee is to help offset some of that, I'm not sure we've kept pace.
Alan, where's your happy land?
I could see a 50% increase, but not 100% increase. That's just, you know, to me, I, I just...
I don't get so hung up on percent.
I just don't get it. I'm sorry. Yeah, I hear you.
I can, I could live with it, so, it's those rare moments where I don't necessarily firmly agree with Alan.
That's okay.
So I'm running the meeting, so I'm here to listen to what you guys, you three have to say.
I think there should be parity between what we're charging non-residents and what Kennybunk charges, and that would just keep the, a level playing field. I'm not saying charge more, just, that's what they charge, that's what we charge.
Will you three fight it out and let me know what you want to do?
Well, I would propose that we...
Do what you want to do.
Make our fees for the non-residents, daily, weekly, and seasonal equal to the fees that Kennybunk charges for the non-residents.
Or to what it just said.
I think that's what I had said, twenty-five, a hundred, and two hundred.
Right. That is what you said.
Yeah.
That's what I would propose.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? The ayes have it. Opposed? Alan? Or abstention, whatever you want.
No, I opposed it.
You opposed it, okay. Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, so we have gone, oh, adopt the Goose Rock's Beach parking sticker rules, regulations.
That's...
Annually, we must adopt the rules and regulations. We're not proposing any changes.
I agree with that motion?
Mm-hmm. Second.
All in favor? Alan?
What's that?
This is just for the rules. I didn't see your hand up.
The rules.
Okay, it's unanimous. All right. Number eighteen, consider the following abatement request. John Lucero.
Lucero.
Lucero of 289 Ocean Avenue, MAP 20, Block 2, Lot 5A. The abatement would be for 169.95, and I believe it was suggested that we issue that abatement.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? I'm moved. Okay. Number nineteen, approve the waste hauling permits for 2019 for Casella Waste DBA, Pine Tree Waste Services, and BBI Waste Industries. That, they've paid their fees, they hadn't at the last...
Can I, can I just stop you for a minute? So...
Come on a roll.
I know, but Arlene was trying to point something out while you were talking to me. So the, under number seventeen, adopt the Goose Rock's Beach parking stickers, and I said we weren't recommending any changes. Arlene noted that in the regulations, it has the prices in there.
Oh.
And so I would just ask if your vote included the amendments to the prices that's just voted upon?
Yes.
Yes.
For clarification? Yes.
Thank you, Arlene. So we need to approve the waste hauling permit for Casella, and this is, at this point, they've paid, they've got the permits, we just, I mean, they filled out the paperwork. All we have to do is give them a yea or an aye.
So moved.
Have a second?
Yes, second.
I'm sorry. All in favor? So moved. And, oh, more excitement. Authorization to enter into a five-year agreement with SPC for photocopier lease.
Do you love your photocopier, Laurie?
I don't. That's why we need new ones.
No.
Okay.